Okay, all of our streams are running. Dr. G, the meeting is yours.
All right, we are calling to order the March 2th ECI committee meeting. Stand for our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The flag, United States of America.
And to the republic.
To the republic, for it stands.
Nation.
One nation, under God.
Indivisible.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Gilmore, do we have anyone for public comment before I read the guidelines for addressing the committee?
We could do a pre-hand raise if anybody intends, who's in the audience, to speak tonight on our first public comment. Go ahead and raise your hand now, and that'll indicate we've got a hand, so we can read our disclaimer.
In order to meet the requirement, the Pennsylvania sunshine law, it is necessary to record the names of all citizens who speak to the committee during the meeting. For sure compliance with this requirement, it is essential that those planning to address the committee state their name and address. Members of the audience are asked to limit their questions and comments to no more than three minutes. This limit will permit time for all those who wish to speak to the committee. Whenever members of the audience exceed this limit, the committee chair may ask the individual to yield to the next speaker. Mr. Gilmore, if I could just ask you to have the timer ready before we open the mic, please? Thank you.
Very good. I will even share the screen before we go to our first comment. Up first is Mr. Patchell. Mr. Patchell, your mic is enabled. When you're ready, unmute your mic, state your name and address, and begin your comments, please.
Okay, my name is William Patchell. I live at 404 Bonnie Lane, Lansdale, Pennsylvania. I'll make another ad for Montgomery Township. I consider this the finest real estate available in the Commonwealth, with all the things that anybody would ever possibly need. And the educational system, which is always undergoing tweaking, modification, advancement, is a good sign that it's a work in progress. My interest tonight is, this year, I'm trying to get the bus purchases. I talked to Mr. Krenak, and he said to me that we need to make 10 new purchases every year for the next eight years. Okay, so you have to put this in your budget. I've read the mileage on these buses. Honest to goodness, it's, I hate to call it junk, because I'm sure in some little portion of the world, they would be happy to get these buses. But remember, every organization worth its salt depends on logistical support. We have to be encompassing all different things. Number one is the climate change. Why don't we get on board and have a fully propane bus, bus transportation system, commonality in all the systems, so that Mr. Krenak can get these mechanics, and we can have probably, as I have said many times before, the very best bus transportation available in the Commonwealth. And when people see the bus pull up, this will be like curb appeal. And they know that this is the beginning of their children's adventure to learning and discovery. And when they say they graduated from North Penn School District, people that are really knowledgeable said, you know what? They are pretty fantastic. Now, our system will probably shrink a little bit because of the undo effect, the undoing of certain things like real estate. We're going to lose some people, I'm sure, because of the moratorium will no longer be available to people, and they'll be forced to move because of their rental circumstances. They might, if they've been out of work, I doubt they'll be able to refinance. So we probably will have a smaller student body. I want you to recommend to, the curriculum is built upon the transportation. It's gotta be reliable. It's gotta be reliable coming and going. And the people who drive the buses, they're the first person that a child sees when they begin this journey. And the people I've talked to, I don't know how they keep doing it. I don't think I'd be interested in the job myself, but I've been retired for 17 years. But this will be cost effective, this will be reliable, and this will be something the district will be very, very proud of. Finished, one second to go.
Thank you, Mr. Patchell. Do we have anyone else for public comment?
I will just throw out there, this is the only public comment for tonight, so if you intend to do it, now would be the time. And there is one hand up. So that's Selma Robinson. Selma. When you are ready, I've enabled your microphone, you can unmute, state your name and address, and begin your comments, please.
Good evening. My name is Selma Robinson, 350 South Cannon Avenue, Lansdale, Pennsylvania. While watching tonight's meeting, I would like the following address if it can fit into the agenda. What I'm looking for is confirmation that the North Penn High School Program of Studies was altered for the 21-22 school year to select their courses for next school year. After watching and participating in the last school board meeting, it was my understanding that the board passed the change of PE requirements for the 22-23 school years, school year from four years of PE requirements down to three, not for next school year, but the 2022-23 school year. So it's my understanding, after watching the last general school board meeting, that all current eighth, ninth, 10th, and 11th grade students should register for the next year of PE as done in the past. I also wanted to mention, and again, this is hearsay, that one of the reasons this change was made in the PE course requirement from four to three years is that there was a personal interest kind of driving this change primarily to avoid the aquatics requirement. If that is true, and I hope it's not, again, this is hearsay. I'm very sad that a person's personal agenda can change 50 years of an amazing tradition of aquatics of North Penn High School. The aquatics program addresses all ability levels, so we're talking equity across the board. We address the kids in our school district that need to learn how to swim, stroke improvements, fitness levels are enhanced, and exposure to rescue and safety techniques are also part of the course that is offered to all sophomores that go into North Penn High School. I find it interesting that it's a contradiction to the school district trying to encourage and offer wellness courses to the faculty and staff, but at the same time, we are cutting back on our PE requirements. So if that can be addressed tonight, to clarify that moving forward for the next school year coming up, that that course selection would require students that are moving into the next grade to be signing up for the courses for Phys Ed as they have done in the past. Thank you.
Do we have anyone else for public comment?
There are no other hands raised at this time, so that will conclude public comment for tonight.
Thank you. And if items are not on the agenda, we would just ask, someone from administration can always follow up on any questions that someone called in for. So if we can just, Dr. Bauer, if someone make a note of that, perhaps P or someone from guidance could always reach out and follow up for questions.
My pleasure.
I believe before we move on with the agenda, we need to approve the minutes. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting?
Don't move.
Second. All in favor? All right. Thank you. Okay, first off on our agenda tonight is the textbook and resource adoption. So, Dr. Bauer, that, I'm not sure who is starting us off tonight.
Sure. Yeah, absolutely. I am pleased to present to you a number of professionals from the district. So proud of the team that we have, and I will point specifically to Dr. Waters, our Director of Curriculum and Equity, who brought just absolute rock stars with her this evening to share some exciting news. So, Dr. Waters, if you wouldn't mind introducing the appropriate teachers, administrators, and staff that are going to help guide us through this information this evening. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you, Dr. Bauer. Good evening, everybody. I am also really excited for what we have to present tonight. In curriculum, it's really important that we continue to enhance our programming for students. And so tonight, you're going to hear from Mrs. Rachel Early and Dr. Sean Arnie, and I will give them the honor of introducing the special guest that they brought with them that will first talk to you about, Mrs. Early's going to talk about curriculum adoptions, and then we're going to be moving into the second item, which is math curriculum review. So, without further ado, I'll turn it over to Mrs. Early, and please, Mrs. Early, introduce your special guest.
Thank you so much, and thank you so much for having me tonight. Here to talk a little bit about curriculum adoptions for the World Language Department, the Social Studies Department, and the English Department. And Mrs. Feng Hui is here to help me discuss the new novels that are up for adoption from the English Department. So thank you so much for coming tonight. All right, we can jump in. Okay, so we're going to start with the World Language Department. And so what is up for adoption tonight is really a program. It includes textbooks, but it's really a comprehensive program. And it's a continuation of this exact time last year, I was here talking about levels one and two for Spanish. So we are continuing that program for levels three and four. It's from a publisher called Vista Publishing, and the program is called Cinderos. I'm going to the next. There we go. So like I said, it's really a full encompassing program. And the publisher Vista is known for integrating not only high-level Spanish, but also really being accessible to those who are native speakers, and that was really, really important to our committee. So the level three will be accessible in our levels three courses, and then, of course, level four in our level four courses. And what's really great about the entire program that I said earlier, that we adopted last year for levels one and two, is it is compatible with Canvas. So it's one of, like, our only products at secondary that we actually integrated right into the platform. So we have student resources and teacher resources and activities that are interactive. That's actually live in our Canvas program on top of textbooks, physical books for students that are available as well. So we're really pleased with levels one and two, and this is a continuation of that same program. Okay, I just didn't want to move on. Does anyone have questions about Spanish or the platform, or just how it went this year, the committee?
I just have one question, question, Mrs. Early. It's a continuation from last year till this year. So is this the middle school Spanish one and two uses this program as well as if you took it at the high school?
That's a great question. So level one and two, we have at all three middle schools and the high school. So a student can jump into level one in eighth grade, and then we have some students who jump into level one whenever they're ready, up until even 12th grade, if it fits their academic needs. So there's like, not really, there is some great alignment, but it really just depends on the student when they jump into the language. So this program is like, would be level three. A lot of students take level three in 10th grade, some in 11th grade, and then, you know, level four. And then, we do have an AP option. That's the last option if a student decides to go that far.
And I believe we fixed this, but just confirmation that we now show if you take level one in eighth grade, it's reflected on your transcript, and that might be a question that maybe Dr. Bauer has to answer. And I don't know if you know the answers, that or not, Mrs. Early.
I do not know the answer to that.
Dr. Bauer, did we fix that?
We have not added that to the transcripts yet, but the, I believe, Dr. G, in the fall, you had said that you want to see us bring forward that change of, if they take Spanish two, for example, in eighth grade, just have that noted on the transcript, because they don't have their eighth grade year on the transcript, but it can be noted.
Right. I recognize that that, Dr. Bauer, can you explain why that might be important?
Yeah, so there are some folks who are of the mindset that if a college is saying that they require three or four years of a language, even though you say Spanish four, some schools may not honor the fact that you took Spanish one and two in, say, seventh and eighth grade. So in order to get recognition for those years of language, having it noted on the transcript. So that's a custom add to our transcript, which we are planning to do for the fall, so.
Okay. I just want to make sure that does not fall through the loop. And then, and maybe this is just a note to make somewhere, that I know that we've also had conversations regarding Spanish, that we needed to address the barrier for our North Monco students. Because if you take a course at North, or if you take, go to North Monco, then you are not able to take a language and go to North Monco, which then kind of means that you're forced into, I'm going to go the vocational track or the college track, and we don't want students or families to have to make that choice in eighth grade or ninth grade. So I know that that's, again, not something that's going to be fixed this year, but is that something on our radar to take a look at how we can make sure that North Monco students can have access to taking a language?
Yeah, absolutely. Actually, something we're hoping to share next month with this committee. But just to further outline what Dr. G is speaking to, our North Monco students, in many cases, all they can fit into their schedule are the core content areas, and then a lunch period, and then they go to North Monco. So when they're only in the buildings for, say, five periods, that's your four major content areas and your lunch. And there's no room for them to take a world language. So we're looking for some creative solutions. We're also going to propose some creative solutions for the summer, which I hope will open up avenues to provide that opportunity for our North Monco students. Great questions.
Thank you, Mrs. Early. Those are my only questions regarding language, and thank you for stopping in between. Are there any other questions from the committee regarding language?
Okay, we can jump over to social studies. Okay, so we only have one title and course up for curriculum adoption this year for the Social Studies Department. And that is for our AP World History course, and we have, the committee has selected a new resource. Again, it includes a textbook, but it's obviously nowadays, it's always more than a textbook, so it's a total resource called Ways of the World, the fourth edition for the AP course by Bedford-Fort Worth. Thanks. And so our resource for the AP World course definitely needed updating. However, we definitely wanted to make sure that it was aligned with the changes that occurred for the AP assessment last school year. That went live in 1920, so we were able, there was a lot of new resources out on the market in order to meet the needs of the new assessment. So the committee was able to evaluate all of them, and there were a ton of them, which we were fortunate about. And so this was the recommendation from the committee. And the whole resource includes, you know, obviously, student resource and teacher resources, but also practice questions for students as well. And this particular curriculum includes 10,000 years of human history, so it's very, very comprehensive. And also, what was really important is that it is theme-based and includes a ton of primary sources for students, DBQ questions. So all in all, we felt that it was the right choice for our AP World.
I was going to say, keep moving, but I do think there's someone with some expertise related to AP history on our committee here.
I don't know if it's expertise, Dr. Bauer, but I do just want to chime in and say it's a good pick. They changed the curriculum to make, it's actually shortened from 10,000 years to, from about circa 1,200 until today, which means there's a lot more specifics in the course exam description, which is online. Some of the things they pointed out, you know, I had to go and Google, and even the internet didn't have some information about some things. So the updated version is certainly a positive, and I'm glad our teachers and students will benefit from it. Great work to the committee. It's a very good choice.
Thank you. That's.
I defer to Mr. McCain on all things social studies.
I thought I remembered that, so that's great to hear. Okay, so I'm going to jump into our last, or at least my last department, which is the High School English Department. If you remember, we've really been working on the novels that are offered in our secondary English curriculum. And so last year, around the same time, we brought some new titles, and then we were back here in July. And so this is kind of like the third presentation, so between those three, those two presentations and tonight, every course in English seven through 12 will have gotten a new title. So that was definitely a goal for us. So I just wanted to kind of connect the dots. So we were kind of like, why women's voices and multicultural voices in 11th grade? It kind of seems a bit odd, but if you add all of those presentations together, it's our whole seven through 12 program. So I'm going to begin with Women's Voices, which is a Grade 12 English collective. And one of the things that we're really excited about, we also talked about this year about no longer making British literature a requirement for all students. So we're really anticipating the numbers for Women's Voices and Multicultural Voices, which Mrs. Hui is going to speak about next, to go up. So I think it's really awesome that we're not only getting new titles, but that a lot more students will be taking these courses, which is really cool. So the title that the committee selected is called Persepolis. And it's, here you can go to the next slide, and I'll talk a little bit more about the text itself. The Story of a Childhood, and it is obviously a New York Times notable book. And it's something different, it's in a graphic novel format, and that's something that is going to be a theme for some of our titles for tonight. And it's just something that I wanted to point out, is we've had some professional development this year, specific for our English department, from a gentleman named Cornelius Minor, who's been an excellent partner to us and has guided us in our resource selection, and something that he recommended as looking at what we currently do as just a nice other option for students. So we took him up on that, and this is one of those selections. And it's an author's memoir of being a young girl in Iran during the Islamic Revolution. And we felt that, the committee overall felt that it was another important, unique voice to add to the current selection that we have in Women's Voices, which is a pretty diverse selection, but definitely nothing that stretched on this theme. So between the graphic novel format and the memoir and the topic, it just felt like a great selection. Okay, I'll just kick it over to Mrs. Hui.
Okay, thank you. So the pick that we've chosen for multicultural voices is called The Best We Could Do by T. Boy. And it is another graphic novel, as well as that Mrs. Early kind of talked about. It's a finalist for the National Book Critics Circle Award. It's been a selection for the AOA Notable Books and an American Book winner. So it is a memoir. The author kind of traces back her family's journey from South Vietnam to America. And it references a lot of major historical events, starting from the Indo-China War to World War II to the Vietnam War, and obviously, you know, the immigration process to the United States in the 1970s. And it's a really, it's a really personal viewpoint to all of those historical events and how all of those things impact this one particular family. And we felt that it was a good pick because, as it currently stands, multicultural voices has authors representing a Mexican-American voice, an Afghan-American voice, an Indian-American voice. But currently, we have nothing that kind of represents that East Asian perspective. So this has a wonderful theme of, you know, family and identity and what it means to call home, since the family does immigrate to the United States.
I just love that these are very timely, you know, maybe I'm showing my age by saying they're very recent novels or graphic novels, right? But certainly, the way the world is today, from a social studies perspective, is going to be validated in some ways by the English literature that they're having as well. So this full approach to the humanities is very much appreciated. I just love to see all these different voices from a time period where some students may have some parents that went through these situations and have repercussions in their own household for the experiences that their families have gone through. So I like this very much. Thank you for your work to bring it together.
Yeah, I just will echo Mr. McCain. I think one of the, you know, one of the things that we charged Mrs. Early with kind of leading this work with was looking for opportunities to represent and reflect the strength and diversity that's in our district and to look for ways to tell the story of every child that attends school in our district. Those that are able-bodied, those that are not, those that are from a variety of different cultures. And I think as part of what you did, you're looking for places where there are gaps in that, where we are missing the stories of some of our children, and looking for opportunities for them to have a mirror of themselves in the literature they're reading. And I think that I'm already seeing that tonight, and I think, you know, the committee in general, I'll speak for myself, is exciting to see that shift, and that we're really going to represent. And I think even important to represent the journeys of different cultures, and that within all of those journeys, there is a danger of a single story, right? So all of the stories are not, and I know you did that professional development with staff, are not the same. But for us to start to tell different stories so that all our kids are able to learn from that. So thank you for your work and leadership, and I know the teachers read dozens of books to get to the right ones, and we are very appreciative of that, that this work continued even through the pandemic.
Thank you so much. We really, really appreciate that support, and we're definitely proud of the work that we've done. And the teachers have been really excellent partners in this with everything else that's going on. It's just very, very important, and I think that that says a lot. And we have two more titles to round out tonight, and they are for our English 11 course, which, as we know, you know, all students take in 11th grade, except for those in the AP course. So it's really, really important, and we actually are selecting two titles for that course tonight. And you can just go to the next slide, Bob. The first of the two titles is March Book One, which is also a graphic novel. And obviously, you can see it's won many awards, ALA Notable Book, Coretta Scott King Honor Award. And it's centered on John Lewis's commitment to nonviolence and civil rights. We're all familiar with John Lewis and his work as a civil rights activist and longtime Congress member. And it's actually Book One in a trilogy, and Book One centers on his youth in Alabama and just all the instances leading up to the civil rights movement. And it just tells his particular story, which I think is really an important story to hear for our students. And so, again, as we talked about, graphic novels being accessible, students being able to make those humanity connections, and just that the story is a very important one for our students to hear, made it an excellent selection. And then our last title is called The Namesake, and it's written by Pulitzer Prize winner Jambalaya Lahari. And the book is a story of a family traveling from West Bengal to America, and just the name that they pursue on their firstborn son, and just the challenges between generations, from parents to children and living in America and how it's different. And the committee really liked the text, you know, not only because the author is still well-known, but also because referencing the experience from West Bengal culture was really important. As you know, again, our community includes many individuals from South Asia, so we just wanted to make sure that that experience was represented in our students' academic experience as well. Thank you.
So one question that I have in general, oh, go ahead.
Dr. G, as you all know, or some of you may or may not know, but I'm out of state due to a family funeral, but I wanted to get on. But I wanted to get on and be a part of hearing about this presentation that Miss Early was presenting. And I will say that I am also very proud of the work that you all have been doing to ensure that native-born and not non-native-born voices are at the table being heard. And I will venture to say that our school district is ahead of the curve in getting these changes into the reading curriculum for our students. So I agree with Mr. McCain and Dr. G in that we're really excited and real appreciative of having these different voices at the table. So thank you very much.
I do want to invite our, if our, you know, when it comes to these presentations, I think it's nice that we have our student panelists that are on here. So if you have any questions, then please make sure that, I know I always say at the beginning, but you're in this, right? So you just came out of 11th grade English, and so certainly you're welcome to ask a question if, you know, you have any.
I just wanted to comment and say that I remember back in August of last year, I think that really that first wave of culturally inclusive novels of Brown Girl Dreaming and The Crossover. The district, the administration introduced that. And to now see this again, it just really shows that commitment to, you know, cultural competence and, you know, sharing more than one story and to make sure that, you know, people have a diversity of thought, because that's obviously going to lead to a diversity in action. And I think that's really important. I'm actually writing my critical paper on The Namesake now. So yeah, it's a really good novel, so.
I do have one question, Ms. Early, just because I'm not answering your. The novels that we are working on, I'm guessing the teachers then will have some time this summer to be able to kind of flesh out what, how they're teaching these novels. Like they need time to work on that, like shifts like this don't just, they need time to work on that. So is that built into, like they're going to be given some time, some paid time that they can work on that this summer?
Yes, so the plan is, is that we will, you know, order them as soon as, you know, they're approved. We, after they're approved, we can purchase them for the teachers. And then over the summer, we have, they get obviously flex time, so we can use that first. And then after that, I do have curriculum time budgeted for the English department so that we can work on making sure, you know, that there's resources and assessments and that they feel comfortable instructing them at the start of the year. Great question. Thank you so much.
Great job, Mrs. Early. Okay, Dr. Waters and company, of course. Thank you, Mrs. Nguyen. Dr. Waters, who do we have next?
All right, and great job as well. So next we have Dr. Sean Arnie, Mr. Ron Martiello, Ms. Michelle Falco, and Mrs. Ainsley Finkelway. I think I said that right. So they are going to be presenting on the new math program for elementary that they are going to be recommending tonight to ECI. And just telling you all that it has to offer for our students, it's very robust. And I gave them a time limit, so I don't want to talk too much to take it away from them, but excited to hear.
So before you pass the mic to Dr. Arnie and his team, I just want to say, as all of our presenters this evening are finished, you're welcome to go be with your families. So please feel free to step out.
Thank you, Dr. Bauer. I was just going to say that. I know that Miss Early really loves math, but she is the person. So yeah, I'm glad that we are going to let them go be with their family. Sorry, math people, you got the late end of the meeting.
Well, thank you. That's, that's okay. And I just wanted to thank Dr. Waters for setting the stage for the math presentation. And, you know, I will be candid, I did ask her two questions before tonight's presentation. And I said, how long do I have and how many people can I invite? Because hopefully, at the end of the presentation, you will hear the energy and excitement that this committee will bring to the table. So like Dr. Waters said, my name's Sean Arnie, I'm the supervisor for Elementary STEM. I have one of the district rock star math coaches, Mr. Ron Martiello. Ms. Fay Markle is a third grade teacher at North Wales. And Ms. Falco, sixth grade teacher at Knapp. And they make up a very, very, very small portion of our K6 North Penn math committee. As you can see, it's 50, it was 50 members strong. But I'll start by saying that this work and this committee started at the basement of Pendale Middle School, January of 2020, when we could all be together. And it was great, you know, meeting each other and getting the work started. And that committee grew from about eight to 10, too quickly to 50. And, you know, I offered anybody that wanted to be a member of the committee to talk math and look at the future and building our program here in North Penn. If you were willing, give us some time, you were on the committee. So the committee was made up of elementary teachers, regular teachers, specialized teachers, coaches, as you can see, gifted teachers, ELD teachers, administrators, administrators, and parents. And one of the things I want to recognize, and you know, Mrs. Early, you alluded to it earlier with Dr. Gee recognizing it. This, all of our work done, 90% of our work done was done virtually, not in person. And it was done after school, you know, in breakout groups and, you know, in meetings. And I want to applaud the members of the committee because, you know, after screen time for, you know, a long day, the work was really very tiring. So the members of this committee gave a lot of their time and energy over the last 15 months. So I'm going to acknowledge that. Next slide, please. So let me just talk a little bit about the process that the committee used to get to where we are today. We all worked collaboratively as a math team. We began our work by kind of sitting back and reflecting, like, where are we now in math? You know, we have Go Math, that's our resource, you know, this is our, our math program. You know, we kind of reflected, is this what we want to do in the future? Couple of short wins before we even started our work, you know, we increased the math instructional time. So we recognized that we needed more time for kids in math. So for our students in kindergarten through fourth grade, we increased from 60 to 75 minutes. And our upper grades, intermediate grades, we increased to 90 minutes. So right there was, was an immediate win this spring, I mean, for this school year. So we all recognized that that was an immediate need. We kind of like threw some butcher block paper on the wall and we drew a picture of a kid, a student, and we call them a math knight. And we wanted to be able to develop a vision and a picture of what we wanted a student to look like when they graduated from North Penn. And I'm going to share that with you in a little bit, because we developed a little bit of a vision statement for that. We researched instructional best practices and implications for all of our students. Our ELD students or specialized students or regular students and, and, you know, and we wanted to ensure that our curriculum and our resources were culturally responsive. You know, we took a look at the district's framework for cultural responsive instruction, the matrix that, and we wanted to make sure that was infused in the, in our work and in the program that we ultimately selected. We reviewed five different curriculum resource programs from late November to, I want to say, at the, right up till Christmas break, five different vendors. After school from 4:30 or I think it was 4:00 to 5:30, almost in week successions, all the way up to the break. We used a pretty robust rating scale, each member of the committee that listened to the program presentations. This, this was a survey or rubric that was developed by Achieve the Core. And it's called the IMET survey. And we didn't use the entirety of the rubric because it included about 70 pages. So we created a bridge version. And we created this and presented this to each member of our committee as they went and listened to each vendor. They filled it out anonymously and we used the results in the selection process. Just want to recognize that with any curriculum review, it is an ongoing process. And I said to the committee that picking your resources is the easiest part of the work. Once the curriculum comes, you know, that's when your work really, really starts in planning your professional development, your short-term goals and long-term goals, to make sure the teachers are ready, you know, to implement the program with fidelity as well as understanding all of the different components.
Mr. Arnie, I'm interested in hearing more about, you said you researched best practices and implications on student learning, specific to our students with special needs, specific to that, specific to our ELL students. Like I'm wondering where, what, like what came out of that research? Is that later in the presentation? I'm sorry.
Well, you know, I certainly think that some of our panelists are going to talk about that. And I will also be addressing that at the end. But one of the things that was very important to all of us on the committee is that whatever program we selected had an entry point for all of our learners, regardless of their ability, disability, their background and their language, the first language. So the core program had to be accessible and equitable for all of our kids. That was very important to us.
And what were the other five, or what were the five resource programs that you looked at? And the data that you, and in terms of the programs that you looked at, and did you look at places where these programs are being used? And what the data around math instruction looked like in those districts?
So in a non-pandemic world, we would certainly have gone out and visited some schools that were implementing the programs in use. So a lot of it was done through conversations of committee members. So the other programs that we looked at were Eureka Math, Bridges, Big Ideas Math, Envisions, and Ready Math. So all of how we arrived at the selection of those presentations were based on the committee members, their conversations and collaboration with colleagues, and what was working in schools that were using those programs. As well as at the, towards the end of the program, I will share with you a report that the committee used called the Ed Report, which is a very nice summary of all of the different curricular programs that are on the market now and how they rated. Okay, if you could continue. So as I stated earlier, you know, early in our process, we threw a piece of paper on the wall and we drew a picture of and started throwing words around, you know, this image of what we believed or what we felt we wanted our, our students to look like when they graduated from North Penn. So we want to produce graduates who are capable of utilizing the standards of practices and mathematical knowledge to persevere and apply real world, real world problem solving. That's very important to us because math doesn't stop, I tell my daughters every day, math doesn't stop the day they leave high school. You know, because it's real world, it's every day. We want the students to be able to apply what they learned in their, from school into their real world setting. We developed some math belief statements that we feel are, we strongly feel and apply to all of our students. We want our graduates to be problem solvers with perseverance, to effectively utilize appropriate tools to support their successes, make connections with their learning in the outside world. Be provided the room to not only find solutions to problems, but justify their positions and defend their methods. Understand that they all have the ability to grow as learners and that there are multiple pathways to success. And to understand that struggle is okay, and we all fail forward. I'd like to introduce Mr. Ron Martiello, the district K6 math coach, and he's going to talk about the next slide.
Thank you, Dr. Arnie. And I want to thank as well all the members who have really put their energy and work behind this because those belief statements that they came up with really helped us to shape this next portion. Dr. Arnie and I did, we explored some resources also outside of education. We took a look at Simon Sinek and his Golden Circle and his book, Starting With Why. And so with the belief statements that we had, the trending information that's coming out of the math community across the country, we took a look at, you know, starting with our why. Simon always talks about how good organizations, people don't buy what you do, they don't buy how you do it, they buy why you do it. So we want people, we want our teachers, our students, our community to buy into why we teach math. And, you know, the first thing we start with is the student. And we want to have them have a great approach to math with a mathematical mindset. We want them to believe that, that everyone can learn math at high levels. And we also want them to believe that they can learn math and grow from wherever they are. We would like to design innovative design so that we can learn math in many different ways. And in the best ways, we could take a blended model approach where we could take the best of the traditional practices and infuse them into these new innovative practices that, you know, our society and the way our, the technology is asking our students to think. And then finally, once they go through this experience, we want our students to come out with positive math identities. And this is some great work that's being started by the NCTM, the Organization for Math Teachers. They are really taking a look at math identities and how does learning design impact their belief in who they are as a math learner, no matter what their background or what their level might be. Because ultimately, we want our students to have, we want our students to be able to accomplish whatever goals they have for themselves. And math should not be the gatekeeper. Math shouldn't be the thing that keeps them back from accomplishing their goals, and it should move them forward. We also have to stamp out this myth that math is only for a chosen few and that there's this math mind that people are born with. When really, everyone has the ability to do math. And if we do our work and build these positive identities, then we can also impact future generations to come. So I think that what you see in the golden circle here, we have our what, which is our framework and our core standards. We move into our how, which is all those great things that, that a math program is built from. We also added a blended math design as well as some personalized learning information in there. But ultimately, the student is at the center. We want them to know that math is for all and that math is for life. And so now I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Michelle Falco, who's going to give you a little bit of information about the Ready Math Program and how it fits into this.
Thank you, Ron. So our committee wanted to make sure that we found a robust curriculum resource that helps to develop those independent mathematical thinkers and really develop problem solvers. So some of the components that we found most valuable in this curricular resource are as follows. So the iReady Classroom Mathematics is a very coherent math curriculum that includes easily adaptable lessons to address students unfinished learning across the math domains. And the program has a very high level of rigor for all students with, as you know, Sean was mentioning, it's really important for all students to have an entry point. So we find that this program has an entry point for all students. And as educators, we know that it's critical to have these rigorous practice opportunities for our students to build their conceptual understanding as well as their procedural fluency. And having these factors in place with this program will allow the teachers more opportunities for differentiation that our students need in order to be successful. So the lessons are designed to be delivered over a course of multiple days in order to develop student mastery of skills rather than just spending one day on a skill and then moving on to the next. There are a lot of ancillary materials that are offered that are also compatible with Canvas for ease to teachers and consistency for students. This program also has strong professional development embedded. And the people through this program are also very available to offer help to the teachers during the onboarding process and as well as beyond that. And one of the really important parts of this is that there is strong evidence of coherence in this program, which will really provide consistency for the students. And additionally, it's also going to allow the teachers to have those productive and collaborative. And additionally, it's also going to allow the teachers to have those productive and collaborative vertical conversations. And planning between math teachers at different grade levels during those PLC meetings. The standards for math practice are also very prevalent and they're extensively and naturally embedded into these lessons as well. So that students and teachers can maintain the focus on them and keep those standards of math practice at the forefront of our instruction. The program also oper- offers a lot of opportunities for and strategies for rich discourse among students and teachers. And there are questioning techniques that are suggested in the program that encourage the development of strong problem solving skills. And it includes prompting for math reasoning for student answers. So the focus is not really just about at arriving at a correct answer. But more the focus is exploring on ways to get to an answer and then devising alternate ways to arrive at an answer and solve problems. And this program, we found it to be very family friendly and it offers various modes of support. For at home, including parent letters. There are also video models for homework resources. And it can also support with distance learning and reteaching concepts. And there are a lot of print resources available for parents right on the website. And we feel that our team concludes that this program thoroughly encompasses all components that are necessary to meet the needs of all of our learners. You can go on to the next slide here. So if you take a look at this, this graphic, you can see that the program received some of the highest ratings possible on comparative reports. Some of the key components that were assessed here were focus and coherence, rigor and the mathematical practices and then the usability rating. So all of those, they, they've scored very highly on there. And then you can see that this graphic only goes up to fifth grade, but sixth grade also received the same scores. They just were at the middle school level. So they did also receive the highest ratings at that level. I'm going to turn it over to Ainsley Fay Merkel.
Hi, thank you, Michelle. Um, good evening. So I'll be explaining, um, the components of how, um, Ready Math will fit into our math instructional block. As you heard earlier in the presentation, um, Dr. Arnie shared that the instructional minutes were increased, um, for our elementary students. Um, and these additional minutes provide teachers the time and opportunity to implement the North Penn School District components. Of the blended learning model that supports our district's vision for math instruction. In order to provide that optimal learning for all students in our district. The blended learning model is based on research, um, that we looked at from Dr. Katelyn Tucker, who took that research. Um, from Staker and, uh, Horns. And, um, that research really guided our, uh, focus group and our committee work, uh, during this curricular review process. Um, and we believe that the Ready Math, Ready Classroom Mathematics Program. Provides the resources necessary for those teachers to be able to implement that blended learning model. Over the course of the three or five day lesson modules, as, um, Ms. Falco explained during her, um, portion of the presentation. Um, the components of the blended learning model include whole group instruction, um, small group instruction. Uh, those collaborative learning opportunities as well as individualized pathways for our learners. Um, who might be outside of that general instruction that maybe, that they might be receiving during that lesson. Embedded within these components of blended learning, students have multiple opportunities to engage in mathematical discourse. Um, real world mathematical application and rigorous problem solving with access points. To that problem solving for all of our learners. Um, and so the Ready Classroom Mathematics Program supports all of our teachers as well. By providing the teachers the resources in order to be able to implement this blended learning model. Uh, to differentiate that instruction and promote student learning. During the spring and summer, we'll continue to revisit this model through professional development. Uh, for the successful implementation and that onboarding, um, of the resource. And continue to look at this model, uh, for twenty, uh, sorry, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year and beyond.
Thank you, Ron, uh, Michelle and Ainsley. Yeah. Bob, can I ask you to go back to the slide that had the, um, math nights for life that Ron, um, focused on right there? Um, I, I just want to kind of pay particular attention to this slide and give it, um, some extra props. Because I don't really, when I look at creating a math student for life. It doesn't really matter what program we decide on, um, whether it's Ready Math or Everyday Math or what, what have you. Um, I truly believe, and I think I could speak, um. You know, with everybody on the committee, that we truly believe that we need to provide training, professional development. And support for our teachers so they understand what math discourse coherence, rigor looks like. So they could provide training, uh, we could provide training to our teachers so they could, um, transfer that to their students. Okay, so I just, I really want to emphasize that because this is, this was really the crux of most of our work for, um, the past year and year and a half. All right, so you can go to the last slide, Mr. Gilmer. Um, the last slide is kind of like my bibliography, my reference document. Um, I, I do want to, uh, reference and point out a couple of things on here. A lot of our research came from Achieve the Core and Achieve the Core is a nonprofit organization entitled Student Achievement Partners. Um, there is a link that, um, to that, um, for, so you can go on and see. Um, you know, where we, um, got a lot of our information and we believe a lot of our research came from.
Dr. Arnie, can you, um, so two things regarding the last slide. Um, I know you talked about positive math identities and, uh, just a statement in terms of supporting that. I think, um, as a board, we, um, support really moving form, forward initiatives around STEM in general. We know that if we talk about college and career readiness. Students who are graduating and going into college, we need, we need to be hopefully. Exposing them to as much around STEM as we possibly can because that's where jobs are going to be. Not that you can't go out and do something else, go into journalism or, or law like my daughter, um, who's a North Penn graduate, but other, other things. But, um, I do think that positive mass identity is important because we know that there's. Studies to show that at a certain grade, um, girls just go the other path. And boys think that, you know, boys are all, we're great at math and girls are all like, I'm not. And, um, knowing, recognizing that we have, you know, a, a female engineer on our board. Um, so, you know, I think it's just important. I'm glad to see that, that positive math identity, that that was a focus. Um, I am wondering, one of the, the, um, questions that's always been brought up about the everyday math program. Is that it didn't translate well into middle school. And so I'm wondering kind of what that feedback was in terms of our vertical alignment. Of if you feel this program is something that's going to translate better into middle school. Our middle school colleagues, because in districts that I've been in, we use everyday math as well. And sometimes the middle school colleagues say, well, you know, when they get here, we don't need them right, starting to draw a bunch of boxes to figure out how to. Dr. Bauer's laughing because that's what the secondary folks say to us, elementary folks. So I'm just wondering what that, how this program translates. Um, you know, in terms of the vertical alignment into middle school. Do we think our students can come out stronger from sixth grade? And I think we have a sixth grade teacher on here, um, entering middle school.
So I'll, I'll start off and maybe I'll pass it to, to Michelle, but I will say, um. That I, I had the pleasure of being the, um, secondary STEM supervisor during most of this, um, process. So I had, um, the, the years of many of the, uh, secondary, uh, teachers as well. There's also some sixth grade teachers, uh, that were, uh, former middle school teachers. That understand the, the coherence and, and transition from elementary to middle. So I, I believe that we will have, um, a, a nice coherence. Starting in kindergarten and matriculating through middle school. I will say, uh, I'm very excited to have Donna Dome on board as the new secondary STEM supervisor. Um, she a- and I have already had many conversations about the articulation of, of our curriculum, K-12, 12K. Back and forth and how we need to build, uh, some, um, varied structured coherence. Um, you know, looking at student performance data, looking at course offerings, uh, looking at scheduling. We've already had many conversations and our heads are spinning because we, we really, um, are excited to get started. So to answer your question, I think there is a nice coherence moving from sixth to seventh grade into middle school with the Ready Math program. Um, Mr. Gilmer, I wasn't done with the presentation. I, I wanted to share one more thing. Is that okay?
Mr. Gilmer just told you that you're done, Dr. Arnie.
Oh.
I'm, I'm just kidding. Go ahead.
So i- if it's okay, um, I just want to make. I just wanted to highlight two more things because my boss told me to, uh, Dr. Waters told me I had to. Um, so, Mr. Gilmer, if you could click on any of the grades, um, that are there, um. Well, that's not good. Um. All of the links were, were available earlier. There we go. So what you see is, um, a sixth grade, uh, curriculum framework document. And in the, in the, um, presentation, we clu- we included, um, all of the grade level, uh, presentations. Um, and I just want to highlight this work because, um, this was the, um, a lot of, we spent a lot of time, um, with coherence from. Six, sixth grade to kindergarten and kindergarten to sixth grade to make sure there was even flow. Um, you know, you know, moving up vertically. Um, one of the things I will highlight is what you'll see on the far left corner of column is. We color coded the, uh, the major focus areas for the grade level. What that means for our teachers is those are must do's, can't do without, um, standards. Uh, we call them focus standards or, uh, so those are things to help when teachers are planning. They have to hit. The next column are, are standard clusters. Uh, these are like anchors. They go along with, with the focus areas. They are also, um, must do's. Um, the middle column are, uh, is a cross work with our Pennsylvania, um, standards. There is a nice crosswalk between the, the Penns- uh, the Pennsylvania standards and the achieve the core or, um, the Common Core standards. And the last three columns, really, you talk about what resources we're going to use. What assessments we're going to use. And then finally, the academic vocabulary. And I would say the last three columns are really ones that we have to come back and visit now that we have our resource. Because our assessments are going to have to be rebuilt. So we have new curriculum-based assessments. And our mid, our, our materials obviously are going to have to reflect our new program. But I think our vocabulary is going to be okay. So, um, okay, if you stop sharing this slide and if you click on the ready, um, the last link. This, uh, this research study was something that also jumped out to the committee was. Culturally responsive math teaching is a summary of the research that was used, um, by Curriculum Associates, the publisher. To develop the Ready Math. You know, additionally, I referenced the framework for culturally responsive instruction matrix used by North Penn. And I found that there was great congruence between what Ready Math believed in the research. And where the district is trying to move in, you know, with our culture, uh, responsive instruction. Um, I'm just going to end by, you know, um, stating a quote from their research. Uh, because I thought it was important and kind of encapsulated what we believe. It just says culturally responsive mathematics teaching aims to allow students to make, uh, to take ownership. Of mathematical knowledge and ways that empowers them to see themselves mathematic, in mathematics and to use mathematics. To examine real world problems, especially those that are relevant in their communities. So that, that concludes our, um, presentation. Are there any, um, questions? Uh, uh, one logistical question I will, will mention to you is that. The quote for the, the price is a six-year quote, uh, with a six years for materials, for the online materials and the, and the print materials. So that may have been a question that you were probably pondering.
Well, I want to thank you on, on behalf of myself and my wife, who I ran this by as a second grade teacher who's been, uh, in everyday math and Go Math and everything you can think of. Um, I love, uh, the fact that I've kind of seen math as a bit of a language for a long time now. And, and fluency as, as such is important. And this takes that approach. This takes the approach of giving students a lot more real world situations early on. It promotes a, a mathematical discussion as opposed to a, a simple, this is this kind of almost scientific formula. Uh, and that's a great approach. This program includes diagnostic testing online. And I was wondering to what extent we were going to support families of students who might be doing that at home still, hopefully not. But if that's potentially the case, um, how much are teachers going to be able to pull from that? That makes that worthy of, you know, that kind of time when students are, uh, taking this time to diagnostic test at, at an early age. Um, and also, will they be assessed on their performance on the diagnostic or will the assessments come? Later on, will it be used as a test of mastery? Will it be used as a test of growth? Could you help me understand how, how the diagnostic will be used? Please.
That's a great question, Mr. McBean. And, and I will, um, say. We're, we're not sure because we also have the Renaissance Star 360, which is a universal screener. Um, so we're, we're hoping to leverage both this, the Renaissance product and the iReady. Uh, to balance out the information that we want to try to garner from kids. One, one of the quick wins that we saw with the iReady is that it offers standards aligned and coherent. Um, curriculum-based assessments that, um, the teachers can offer either virtually or in person. Um, I like to think of myself as an optimistic person and hope that we are in person in the, in the fall. But if we are not, uh, we could all, offer all of our assessments digitally, uh, even if we have some kids that attend virtually. I think one of the lifts for our committee in the, in the next step is, like I mentioned, how do you maintain? Pushing the professional development around STAR Renaissance 360 because that tool that we, um, invested in has already, um, leveraged a lot of data. On our students and we, we, we are finishing up our third assessment window right now and we are seeing a lot of growth. In our students and it's giving us real-time data on students that have gaps. Which teachers in turn can provide immediate response to. So when we learn more about the iReady, we're going to have to figure out how to balance both. Um, both tools. I think, in my opinion, you know, um, I, having two tools like that in my tool belt. Is just going to give me a more robust system for analyzing my curriculum. And supporting the differentiation on my students.
Thank you, Dr. Arnie. I appreciate that.
So, uh, any other questions from the committee or comments?
Well, I just wanted to say it's exciting. I appreciate your presentation. Uh, and it is my hope that with this new program, teachers will have a better comfortability in teaching mathematics. Because it, you talked about, everyone can do math. And if the teacher is comfortable teaching those kids who in the past thought they couldn't do math. Or it, 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 it only ended at a certain grade and why do I have to continue to learn this? And how you all are going to make sure they understand and know that, um, math is for life. And, and I like the idea of it being parent-friendly so that the parents can even feel like. This is something that I now can help my students with when we're at home and they're struggling or whatever. And that final quote, I really liked that about that culturally responsive mathematical teaching. So thank you so much and I appreciate this presentation and I wish I had something like this when I was in school.
Um, how, how long have we had everyday math? How long have we been using that program?
Um, Dr. Jamie Goma.
I'm, I'm sorry. I said everyday math earlier too, didn't I? I'm so sorry. I keep shifting between like too many districts.
So, so we are using the 2011, um, print version of Go Math. print version of Go Math with the we also like the AED version of 2015, they they kind of helped us with because it, the 2011 went away and we were left with nothing from December on. So they helped us out with that. So we're using 2015, but the print edition is 2011.
Well, thank you to the committee. I apologize, my turn of words of which program. You know, being in different districts, that's the fun part of it. But thank you for to the committee. It's clear how much work you did in just pulling this all together. A curriculum review on a regular year is a huge task. And then a curriculum review in the midst of this, much of it probably needing to be, you'd be need to meet virtually and all of that. It, I'm sure it was a task to pull it together, the whole thing, and I'm grateful for the leadership. And I think it's just reflective of our continued goals. Very excited to see that it's well aligned with the standards of mathematical practice. And I just think my only hope is to make sure that we have really solid professional development. And we we have the time built in for that. I know professional days are tough, development days are tough. However, you do have a board that's supportive of making sure that there's professional development available for teachers. So as you were looking at the calendar for next year and you're working with Dr. Dietrich, Dr. Bauer, please make sure that that professional development time is built into the program because as we all know, as educators, those of us on here, that is key to the implementation of the program and it being implemented with fidelity. So I do think, you know, follow up would be, we really want to see that there is professional development embedded and that our coaches are out there supporting teachers in implementing this. Because it's important for it to be successful.
Well, I do want to say thank you to the board for allowing us to present. I do want to thank my 50 person strong member of the committee who helped put this together. They have done an amazing job, given up a lot of thankless time. And my final thing is I have a daughter graduating this year from North Penn who is a STEM girl. So, you know, it does, girls do math and I'm very, very proud they do it. All right. Take care. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. And you can certainly see from the group as we kicked it off at the top of the hour here that we just have a passionate group of people who are dedicated to this cess of our students. So thank you to Dr. Waters, Dr. Arnie, Ms. Falco, Ms. Fay Merkel, Ainsley, I have to get that right, and Foon Nguyen, who was with us earlier as well. Just thank you all for offering your time this evening away from your families and friends. So thank you. We appreciate you. And Mr. Marty Yellow, sorry, I missed you. You're up in the corner here. Thank you, Ron. We really do appreciate you. Okay. Oh, we need action on this. We're recommending, we have a recommendation.
And I have a motion to move forward the I'm not sure if we voted on the last one on that, move forward the math curriculum to action.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
I actually don't recall either, Dr. G, if we moved the textbook adoptions forward. Dr. Dietrich, do you recall?
We need to take action in that.
Thank you.
I move that we move forward on the textbook actions as well.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Motion passes. Hey, we'll move forward in the agenda and we will release the math people back to their families. We slowly get smaller as a group.
Yes, thank you.
Move on to the instructional model presentation.
Yes, thank you, Dr. G. I will be presenting just a brief overview here this evening of our distribution of our students in the three instructional models that we have put forward. Thank you, Mr. Gilmer, for pulling up the presentation. So certainly the the point here, Dr. G had asked that I share with the committee and of course, our community is kind of where we are right now, not really getting too far into the nitty gritty of what each of these models look like. We've presented on that in a variety of avenues. But Dr. Dietrich and I, in collaboration with our data analyst, kind of pulled the data as of last Wednesday. So it's February 23rd. Where are we as of now and put together a presentation for you this evening, just so you could see after that first wave of the five day students coming in, what our schools look like. So, Mr. Gilmer, next slide, please. As a review, the three options here are you have five days of instruction at this point of in person instruction. The hybrid model, which is Monday, Wednesday, Tuesday, Thursday, and then every other Friday. And then some of our students still remain in 100% virtual option. If you will recall, back in August, Mr. Gilmer put together a video package explaining what our streaming technology would look like and how we would best position ourselves to be agile and fluid if we had shutdowns, if we were in and out, if kids were quarantined. And I pointed to that evening, Dr. Dietrich's vision, actually on the graduation field as we were celebrating the class of 2020, saying, I want to create a system where we are the most flexible and most prepared, which came with it all of the streaming technology, canvas implementation, better devices in the hands of many connectivity, just a huge, huge undertaking, which was very stressful and difficult at times. And it's certainly, it is, everyone is to be commended for their hard work. The teachers that you'll see in this just two minute video, we got some clips in the last couple of days, just to kind of give a video overview. There, it's just poetry and magic in motion. It is so inspiring to be in our buildings and even to be attend classes online. When I do formal observations this year, I've taken the time to ask the teacher, do you want me to stay virtual and watch as a virtual student to offer you feedback that way? Or would you like me live and in person in your classroom? You'd be surprised at how many of them pick one or the other because I think the the feedback is valuable on both ends. So, Mr. Gilmer, if you would hit play there, just want to kind of share for everyone kind of what you'll see. So this is kicking off the day at North Penn High School, students coming off the bus, certainly less concentration of students than you would normally see swiping in. We saw a presentation about our scholarship program last year. This is an English class at the high school in a hybrid format. We have a student there, Mr. Monero speaking to a screen. Here's another class. This is Mr. Smith. And our hallways in North Penn High School, some students walking down. Here is a hybrid gym class. Some students present and some students on the screen. And now we're in one of our elementary schools. Forgive me, I can't recall which, I think it's Walton Farm that we got this footage from. You can see the students are safely spaced apart. Now we have a music class. They are drumming. Students have pencils. They're not sharing equipment at this point, but they're still having fun. Some students at home and in the classroom doing music class. Here's another elementary class. It looks like they are doing a Kahoot or Quizlet. Our students engaged in their technology with their teacher. Here's an art class. Our, many of our schools, our specials teachers are rotating, so they're coming to the students. But you can see here, here's a student live and in person, but there's the camera or the document cam is focused on the teacher's hand right there. They're demonstrating for the students at home. Still in the same art class. And incorporating and including the students at home with their artwork, I had the opportunity to participate in an art class and did my own drawing of a fox. And here we have one of our cafeterias, what lunches look like. Some students at long tables, some students at desks to try to maximize the space itself. And Mr. Urban. I see Mr. McBean clapping for Mr. Urban. Fan favorite there, including a student in the classroom, talking to the students at home. Doing a little bit of dance in there. So PE in the regular ed classroom. I actually observed a PE class last week as well. So lots of fun and making the best of a challenging situation this year. So thank you, Mr. Gilmer. So the snapshot of where we are, so you'll see here up at the top of this slide, an overview on the left hand side there. That is just a straight up overview of the district, all three levels combined. And it's almost a third, a third, a third of our students who are getting five days of instruction, choosing the hybrid option or virtually 100% virtual instruction, excuse me. That graphic to the right there at the top is by level. So this is where you can start to see the differences in the distribution. And I think honestly, this slide and all the slides I'm going to share with you this evening are fairly commonsensical. Our elementary students have the higher percentage of requests of in day instruct, in person instruction. Right? Because it is more difficult for our younger learners to learn via remote learning. That's not to say it's impossible and it's not to say that some students haven't thrived and some families are happy with the scenario, but it is more challenging for our younger learners. And then you get down to the high school there at the bottom of that same graphic in the top right corner. And it's only roughly 19% of the students have requested five days of instruction. Again, this was as of last week, we have had another wave of requests come in. So it was 19% roughly for five days, 40% roughly of hybrid and right around 42% for virtual instruction. Just another graphic there down below, just to outline what we're seeing there. Next slide, please, Mr. Gilmer. This is by grade. And again, when I said kind of what you might expect, look at this distribution here on the left hand side. Right? I mean, it is almost a perfect curve from kindergarten down to the senior year BN stands for bank students. So that's students who did not accept their diploma as a senior because of their programming as a special education student. So you'll notice the highest percentage of requests was 57.7% in kindergarten, right? Those are our five and six and seven year olds, all the way down to our seniors, where only 15% of them have requested to come every day for in person instruction. Naturally, when you have that curve or trend on the left hand side of this, you see the opposite trend on the right hand side of this graphic, that you have the fewest virtual requests in kindergarten, all the way down to your seniors, where nearly 45% of our seniors are learning exclusively in a virtual format. Mr. Gilmer. And then this is a distribution by school. So there is a bit of variability here, but in general, you'll notice our elementary schools, our middle schools, and then we only have one high school. But the elementary school from five day requests, the leader in the clubhouse right now, sorry for the dogs barking, North Wales is is leading with 55%. All the way down to Oak Park, it's 35.3% of families who have requested five days of instruction. And then, of course, we already highlighted that the high school was 19.6, our middle schools, right around 25% of each school have requested five days of in person instruction. Let me just pause there. Dr. Dietrich, I don't know if you want to highlight anything from these slides. You were certainly involved in helping to prepare.
No, I think the slides are very helpful to just visually depict where we stand, you know, by school. And then the aggregate, as the earlier slides had showed that, we all know they've been watching the incident rate and the positivity and I am pleased to note that in North Penn that the numbers are on a downward trend. In fact, we're more in the moderate level now. We had hit a high of 462 per 100,000 back in December for our incident rate. And now this most recent week, we're down to 88. So we had been all the way up at 462 per 100,000. We're now at 88. Our positivity percentage hit a high of 11.8% in that same week in early December. And we're down now at 5.9. So that is encouraging in terms of what is going on in our community with the positivity rate and incident rate per 100,000. And now this is extra information here that the board and the community can view regarding the choices and the ask that was made by our community.
Dr. Dietrich, I, one, I certainly appalled the building leaders and the teachers at what they needed to do in order to determine how we would make sure that we were able to get to have in person instruction offered in a district our large, this is large as we are. It is a numbers game and you, you know, I know their numbers were tight in some school and you and everyone had to really work together to to get there. Just two questions about, one was just if we sent out the survey and we, so we knew from the survey who wanted it. Since then, if if someone, if someone contacted after the survey, are we just kind of handling that on a case by case basis? Trying to make sure we can allow for people, how is that working? What's kind of our process there?
So each principal recently communicated again, the latter part of last week with their parents regarding, you know, the choices of five days of in person, hybrid or virtual, to see if there was anybody that had not responded to that earlier call for information. And those results are coming back. I think the deadline might be tomorrow, as I recall. And we're watching those numbers and then the principals are looking at, you know, can we achieve the ask again from those additional parent and student requests by staying within the six feet? If not, we'd have to have a conversation as a board and administration about the unmet need at that juncture. I'd say on average, it appears we're getting about two to three additional students per classroom in terms of requests. And the principals are working to see where, you know, that will fit and where we would have to have a discussion about coming to some distance closer than six feet if we were to meet those requests. We would have that discussion with the board.
It's my understanding, and you would know more about this, Dr. Dietrich, that recently Bucks County may have changed or adjusted their masking guidelines relative to sports, I think.
Yeah.
How does that impact us in terms of? How does that impact us? Because obviously, you know, we're doing everything we can to to be safe with masking and and with distancing and we're a large district. We we have a lot of wonderful, great sports teams and just, you know, wanting to make sure that they're protected. How does that impact what our, what our athletic director will do that?
So that is really recent news that we just got that Dr. Damsker of Bucks County had indicated to the school districts in his county that he is not, you know, saying that they need to wear masks if they're playing sports. But we are in that suburban one league and we play a lot of those schools. So today we had that very, the beginnings of that very discussion. We didn't have, you know, full representation from the Department of Office of Public Health in Montgomery County on today's call. They'll be on Thursday's call, so we're going to discuss that again. But I believe that the recommendation of Montgomery County continues to be that students who are participating in athletics would continue to wear masks. Now, there are some nuances to that, though. If there is a helmet and a a mouthpiece, then, you know, masking would not be suggested because of the need to continue to, you know, breathe without that face covering over if you have that mouthpiece in and that, you know, helmet on. So there are some sports that, you know, that would apply to, but as it stands right now, we're going to have that conversation on Thursday with Montgomery County's Office of Public Health and the other superintendents. My gut feeling on this one, Dr. G, is that the recommendation will continue to be that students in Montgomery County would continue to wear face masks. And we would expect that that would then, you know, happen in terms of North Penn athletes.
And so what would be the recommendation if we are playing a team that does not require face mask? If they are one, if they are here, they, stop laughing, Dr. Bauer. You knew the question was coming.
Yeah, that's the discussion, Dr. G.
So you're going to continue that discussion and you will kind of get back to us with the recommendation.
Yeah, that's what we want to talk about on Thursday.
Yeah, there, I mean, there are some nuances to spring sports, tennis, for example. Right? They are certainly a safe distance apart. So if an opponent wasn't wearing a mask, I don't think there's much concern.
We're certainly not looking to tie the hands of our athletic director or anyone else. I have two kids playing spring sports, so I want them to play spring sports. I also want us to be safe and, you know, it's, it would kind of be nice if Bucks County would align with with us, but I I'm just curious what we, what we will do. And to your point, obviously, it doesn't impact tennis and, you know, other, but just wondering, that's all. So we'll just free a recommendation on that. Are there any other? I appreciate the presentation for the committee. I think it's helpful to see it visually. So thank you to I think. I think that, I don't know who you said put together the graphics for us, but I think the graphics are helpful.
Yes, so I do have two more slides. I just, Dr. G, you had asked me to cover just special education and what we're doing, a high-level overview here. We're going to have a more formal presentation on our special education services next month. But you'll see here, this was prepared by Dr. Broxterman and Mrs. McGeeheim. And they shared that all of our instructional options that were outlined in the presentation prior are available to our special education students. And certainly, we program for our students based on their IEP goals. And inclusive programs are supported by our inclusion facilitators, paraprofessionals, and learning coaches. And for our transition-age students, one of our biggest challenges has been finding job sites for our students who are perhaps post-12 and getting out into the community and working. But we have been able to locate two in-district and two community-based job sites where some of our post-12 students are working. And then we have 32 paraprofessionals who are providing supplementary support in the home for virtual students. So one more slide, Mr. Gilmer. And instructional programming for our learners who require more individualized approach to instruction are taught with a schedule that aligns to their needs and environment. And this could be represented by a combination of both asynchronous and synchronous, where it's a little bit more flexible and not quite what you would see in the three options provided, but a combination of them. So when we have specialized learners who require that specific of a learning program, we've been super flexible in meeting those needs. So those are just two overviews, but we want to give a separate presentation for the services that we're providing for our special education students. But again, thank you to Dr. Dietrich and to our data analysts for helping to provide the information for that presentation. Just give you a nice snapshot after wave one, where we currently sit with students in our buildings, so thank you.
Any questions about any of the information? I did have a question about attendance, just an overview of if students are, if attendance that if they are attending virtually or if they come to school, they are marked present. If they're not either one, then what, you know, I'm just wondering what our, because we know that attendance is a predictor of achievement and success in school, right? You need to be there, so I'm just wondering what that looks like. And if we're seeing attendance within certain groups socio-economically is something that I have concern about, right? If you're tracking attendance within certain groups and making sure that we're able, what our protocol is for how we're providing the best support to those groups, whether it's our English language learners or students of a certain socioeconomic background, or whatever it may be.
Yes, so we have currently, when you have a hybrid, a group of students who are hybrid coming into school, and then a group of students who are supposed to be home, and a group of students who are in five days. When we take attendance, we have present, which means they're present in the format that they're supposed to be present, whether that be online or in person. And then we have present virtually. One of our hopes in the fall was to provide that flexibility when students don't feel well, when families don't feel comfortable. Their students can stay home and still learn and stream into the classroom. That has not come without its challenges, of course. And as we heard from some of our student representatives, that sometimes students choose to stay home because it's easier, or they don't want to go in. But it has offered us the flexibility to create the safest environment possible. Now, what we're dealing with is the fact that people have filled out these surveys and said, I want five days, or I want hybrid, and they're not coming. Right? And then we have some students who maybe in the very near future couldn't fit because someone says that they want to come, but they're not coming. So we have reached out to these families and asked the hard questions, like, look, you haven't come to school in two months, but yet you marked five days, are you planning to come? Because if you're not, we have a student who wants that seat. So those are some of the challenges that we're navigating through, I've been told by principals, with one exception, that when they make that phone call, it makes a difference, right? And that's all we can ask for. You call home and say, hey, Mom, hey, Dad, hey, Guardian, John's not coming to school. That seat is his, and we have it saved, but we are tight for space, is he planning to come? And the student does end up coming. So it's just, that is prudent of us to reach out, to ask those hard questions. And sometimes families are saying, you know what, no, he's just going to stay home, he's going to stay virtual, you can give up his seat. But we will be asking those questions, and if we get that press for space, you know, maybe we'll have to make tough decisions if students aren't coming. But let's hope we don't get to that point. Students are attending, if you look at the present virtual and the present itself, we absolutely have better attendance than the average year because it's so accessible. Kids can log in from the comforts of their couch, their bed, wherever they are, their car. So the attendance data is actually very good. It's whether they're physically present when they are eligible to be present, that's been the challenge. But that's a really good question, thank you. Okay.
And one more question, so is it still allowed for students to keep their cameras off during the school day?
Yes, my understanding is that it has improved. And our teachers during assessments and certain activities are saying, all right, students, put your cameras on. And they are, I've noticed when I'm in the room, I think the teachers prep them. But when I come in, everybody's camera's on, and I'm like, this isn't a problem, but I think it's really out of perspective. The teacher's like, come on, can you please turn your cameras on? But yes, so we have not said it is absolutely mandatory at all times, and there's obvious reasons for that, right? Some students don't want you to see inside of their home. Some students have a lot going on in their home, and many family members in the same household, and there's just a lot going on. I observed a second grader the other day, where every time he tried to unmute, his infant sibling was crying next to him, and he got so frustrated. And this boy was only eight, but so articulately said, I am so sorry, Mrs. Smith, but my baby brother won't stop crying, mute. So we're navigating those things, I think students are getting better with it. Elementary are way better than secondary, sorry, gentlemen. But I've heard that the gentlemen are, the high schoolers and secondary students are doing better. Is that true, guys? Are you seeing that more kids are turning their cameras on? And you don't need to lie, you can tell the truth.
Oh, kind of, like, it's, it's, you see more of an increase because more kids are coming into class. So like, I feel like the kids that are, like, when everybody's online, there's like, not even that connection with the teacher because everybody's online, but now that kids are in class too, like, the fact that you see teachers talk to kids, you know, that are present in the class while talking to the kids online, they feel like, okay, it's more of a discussion, they feel more like involved, so that's why they turn their cameras on.
Gotcha.
Yeah. But it goes both ways, because sometimes they also don't, so, you know.
Yeah.
I did check off what like Ephraim said. I think if like a teacher, like, some teachers give like a little push to turn on, like, for students to turn on their cameras. And I think that little push, like, still helps, like, they're like responsive to that. So it's not like a need, like a massive sort of force for people to turn on their cameras, I think. You know, if a teacher, you know, needs that to kind of build that, you know, better classroom discussion, I think, you know, students are responsive to it. At least the majority of students.
Thank you both.
Well, this is a nice shift into our student representative. So how about we move to that?
Yeah, so I wanted to just talk about how in the end of February, securely, Classroom was rolled out. And I think it's a really cool option for teachers, I'm not sure how widespread, you know, it's being used, it's being implemented. But I know teachers have, you know, made it a point that there is this, you know, option, the software. So I think it's helpful for teachers if they, you know, feel that, you know, their assessments are being compromised or they're not getting that, you know, authentic feedback that they want, that, you know, it's, it could be implemented. Or, you know, for students, you know, as a warning to proceed with, you know, extra caution, I think that's nice. Some classes don't really need that extra level of security just because of the way the questions are designed, you know, time constraints. But I think it would definitely help, you know, for classes that, you know, maybe probably still struggling with, you know, test security and all that. And then for AP exams are coming up, and, you know, they rolled out a virtual format and in-person format. And I think right now, you know, teachers are communicating well to their students of, you know, which option, you know, they should choose and the pros and cons of each option, and we're just going through that process right now, picking which option.
So now, from a virtual setting, I want to, you know, piggyback off of what Dr. Bauer was talking about, about in-person learning. And I am one of the few seniors who actually chose five-day in-person learning, so, yes. So I just wanted to talk about how it's going, and, you know, I feel like when I see like a lot of like the juniors or like even the sophomores go into like classes, they definitely like, you know, I feel like they're learning more and they have a better understanding because they get a more quote-unquote hands-on experience with, while maintaining social distancing. But, you know, they understand the material. And even like, I know we focus on like the families and like the students, but the teachers are more excited to teach as well because of the normalcy of seeing students back in the class, because, you know, I don't think they reach to say that the, like, a lot of these teachers have been teaching so long with students in front of them that, you know, they might be a little bit better with students in front of them than communicating online through the screen. But, you know, having kids like in front of them also gives them a bit of more confidence to like, see, okay, these are the topics that kids are struggling on in class, so then it might also be the same way online, so they focus on those topics a bit more. You know, so that it helps, you know, fine-tune it, like refine their, you know, teaching more. And, you know, also, how Dr. Dietrich said, because cases are like, you know, going down and situation with COVID is getting better, the senior class, and like even the high school as a whole is looking in for more like in-person integration of like events, like towards the end of the year, whether that be like, you know, maybe a prom or maybe even like a more, like a more integrated, more integrated graduation. So, you know, we're just moving towards a bit more of normalcy, I guess. But yeah.
Yeah, and Ephraim, we just, I had the opportunity to view the draft prom guidance from the county's Office of Public Health. And they're just about ready to release it publicly. But I'm really encouraged by what I think we might be able to do with prom. It won't be, you know, exactly like the prom from, you know, years back. But I think we can have a prom, I think it'll incorporate the antigen rapid testing in the protocol. So we need to be prepared for that, our students will need to understand that, you know, when they're gearing up for the prom, they need to be super careful, as they should be all the time, but be super careful in advance of the prom, you know, for those days leading up to the prom, and then be prepared to, you know, do the rapid testing and get that green light and then enjoy themselves on prom night. So I'm really encouraged, and I think that prom guidance will come out real soon now.
We'll get to hear, thank you.
Thank you for the update on prom, that was a nice little nugget to end the meeting. Someone will pull up this meeting just to watch the last 30 seconds of prom. So thank you, Ephraim, for bringing up our ratings for ECI.
May the dress buying begin.
I love to see Dr. Bauer, Dr. Dietrich in a dress to like, you know, just to kind of kick everything off.
You're breaking up, I can't hear you.
Um, all right.
Thank you both, thank you both so much, I don't know what we're going to do without you guys next year.
Without them, what are you talking about, aren't they juniors?
They're not juniors.
Well, hopefully, they're training someone to be just as great as they are, they always have great questions. All right, so, and they even hang in with us when we have some of these marathon meetings, Dr. Bauer insists on packing our agenda. So, let's see, there are no additional topics that I'm aware of unless any one in the committee has any additional topics?
Yes, I wanted to bring up a topic under new business, and it deals with the possibility of what we can do to get.
Dr. Lewis Campbell, we can't hear you. Dr. Lewis Campbell. Oh, did she just freeze?
She did, she just dropped out.
Oh.
See if she comes back here in a second.
Started at the Lansdale Hospital, and he's a veteran and so on and so forth. A lot has been discussed with Dr. Dietrich and Dr. Bowers and Tina Stahl, our president. So we all know about what's being done, even with Dr. Jerraj being involved as well. And Dr. Waters has done some things during Black History Month to educate the students about Dr. Boston. So I'm wondering if there would be an opportunity for us to get his new book into our middle schools for the fall in that they could read about this local hero. I know Mr. White Hair is trying to get the book into the Philadelphia African-American Museum as well as the Museum of African History and Culture in DC. So I'm just putting it out there so we can also look to possibly have the book in our middle schools for our students as well. It's not a graphic novel, but it is a historical pictorial book that I think middle school students would enjoy reading. So I wanted to put it out there to see what we do to possibly get it in in the North Penn School District. I know Bucks County has given some commendations about they support the book going forward, they support having the book out there. And I wanted our district to also be a part of anything that's going on. I've been out of state for a while, so I don't know the latest, some of you may know better than me. But I want us to be on top of that so that whatever happens, and since he's from our school district, that we could lead the way of getting this book in our district as well.
Thank you for that suggestion, Dr. Lewis Campbell, we will follow up on that, absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, so Dr. Dietrich, you'll just, perhaps maybe I would imagine that would go through curriculum, possibly looking into our libraries, a review of the book for our libraries. So we'll hear from Dr. Waters an update on that, I would imagine, okay?
Yep, sure, that's what I was thinking, Dr. Lewis Campbell and Dr. G, that's a, we could do that probably pretty quickly with the libraries, maybe even summer reading option, something like that, so we'll definitely look into that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lewis Campbell, for bringing that to our committee. All right, so a summary of items. Dr. Bauer, can you just talk me out with what we need to move forward?
Absolutely, so this committee motioned and approved moving forward with moving the textbook resource adoption and the math curriculum recommendations to the action meeting for a vote from the full board, so we will make sure that gets on the agenda for March.
I would just ask that the description in terms of the report specifically for math and for ELA, that they really are kind of robust descriptions, because especially with, you know, math, we're asking if there's a $1.2 million ask. And there are some big shifts in English curriculum, so I want to make sure that both of those are, you know, well highlighted within the report when I'm reading it and provide the information to the committee.
Yeah, Dr. G, I'll make sure you get the copy of the report in advance, just in case.
Thank you. Okay, so the next regular ECI committee meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, April 6th at 6:00 PM. Can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Everybody to stay? Second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? All right, meeting adjourned.
Thank you, everybody, thank you, Mr. Gilmer.
What?
Thank you.
Everybody, thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.